This conference will now be recorded.
It is 6:30 PM on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. We will call our special meeting of the City Council to order and establish the quorum of council members is present at this time. When I call your name, please indicate if you are present. Councilmember McCabe?
Present.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Present.
Councilmember McCowsky?
Present.
Councilmember Easton?
I am here.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum for our special session. We will start out with our public presentations and input, and I'll turn it over to the City Secretary to introduce our speakers this evening. Thank you, Mayor. The first speaker is Jennifer Wilson. Ms. Wilson, are you on the call?
I am, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I want to start by thanking you for your time and service to our town. My name is Jennifer Wilson, and I have been a member of the Chisholm Creek community for almost 15 years now. Before we made the move out here in April of 2006, we had considered joining lots of other up-and-coming developments, Sinderah Ranch and Tahama Ridge being the most notable. Even though they had a lot to offer by means of amenities and proximity to retail, they didn't have the country charm that we found here in Rome. We found a quaint community with gorgeous rolling hills, native flora and fauna literally in our backyard, and a next nighttime spectacular right outside our door if only we look up. It made the drive to work into town worth every minute, knowing that the end of the day, I would return home to my little slice of country life. Witnessing the rapid development of North Fort Worth, we knew it would only be a matter of time before the city started to encroach on our country way of life. We watched in astonishment as the area around Avondale Hasslet blew up and became a retailer's dream and a traffic nightmare. Yet we crossed our fingers that we would be, that would be as close as city life would get. Despite our hopes, we then learned of the agreement that this council made with PMB Capital in 2019. Again, we hope that these new advancements, while drastic, would preserve the country feel of our town while meeting the agenda of the City Council. As the months have gone by, we continue to be surprised and disheartened as the new plans unfold, from overcrowded roads and inevitable light pollution to drown out the night sky and destruction of the native flora and fauna. However, the most disturbing news being the plating of the land that sits directly behind our property line. We have been told by multiple sources that the space right behind us was always to be a green belt no matter what became of the land right behind the fence, right behind the ranch fence line. You see, over the past 13 years, with the spirit of the late Lady Bird Johnson, my family has done our part to cultivate a beautiful wildflower patch in that green belt that is admired by our entire neighborhood. This past year was the most beautiful turnout of Texas wildflowers yet. I will spare you all my lecture on how this small space is an environmental gem and should be seen as a keepsake, but rather invite you all to come out and admire how colorful this green belt can be this spring. Sadly, it might be one of the last springs we get to enjoy this glorious gift from nature if the plat that was approved by the Plant, Planning and Zoning Commission goes forth without input from the City Council. I implore you all to go to PMB Capital and advocate on behalf of all the Chisholm Creek constituents, strongly encouraging them to allow the green belt that borders both sides of Cheyenne Trail North and South to remain intact, as it is today. In one of my daughter's favorite Disney movies, is one of the characters embraces a change that she didn't ask for, but sought her out anyway. She sings about feeling lost. However, as the song plays on, she realizes the only way forward is to do the next right thing. Council, I plead with you to do the next right thing for our community and preserve this green belt. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Stephanie Miller. Ms. Miller?
I'm here.
Start when you're ready.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm hoping that we have everybody on the line, including the PMB developer of Rolling V Ranch. This is really directed for everybody involved in this project. My husband and myself, Mike and Stephanie Miller, we live at 1111 Cheyenne Trail South, Newark. We come to you to share our inputs on the agenda for Rolling V Ranch, specifically Phase Three. According to the preliminary plat, will be placed home lots immediately behind the eastmost street of Chisholm subdivision, which is, of course, the street that we live on. Note that the, the street of the houses is the only street in the affected manner. So, we noticed on the additional plat, of course, they all have green belts, but we're not privy to that for some reason. We have lived in Cheyenne, excuse me, Chisholm Creek for over 10 years. Most of our time, we were merely only five houses on Cheyenne Trail South. We've had several conversations with the previous owner himself about the easement, and we have always maintained and kept up the lawn care. Just due to pest control, we had small children at the time, didn't want any, you know, snake bites or anything like that. He advised several on several occasions that the easements would remain the same and that we could continue to keep the upkeep, and we do today. That's something that we have always taken pride in making sure that it looks very nice up against the farm and the fencing line. We would like to state that we understand that we need to move forward with each phase and the growth for both Rome and Newark. We, we, we come to you and understand that. That's not, that's not the issue. We're not trying to stop any type of progression and moving forward with the, you know, plans that they have. However, a lot of this looks really great on paper and survey. It does not always have the same outcome when you put it into action. We want to provide you with all the information, as we are the ones that live here and have seen the completion of building out the neighborhood back in 2017, hopefully providing valuable detail and different aspects that might have not been reviewed or thought about. We would also like to share the details that occurred on our street with the fully developed of the neighborhood and the impacts that it had on us and the city of Newark. We do, we really, really do not want history repeating itself. We feel that it's vital information and should be reviewed and taken into account as the development moves forward with Phase Three through Seven. Hopefully, all of y'all have received the attached photos of my property once the lot was built next to us in 2017.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is Becky Goodjohn.
Yes.
Start when you're ready, please.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Becky Goodjohn. My husband is Mike. I had several things to address, but it basically comes down to the most important issues concerning us here at 217 Cheyenne Trail North. We're on the very end by the cul-de-sac. In the housing development that will be adjacent to our backyard border, we purchased our home four years ago because of the view that we fell in love with, and we plan to live out our years here enjoying the view that made us want to buy in the neighborhood in the first place. That has been taken from us, or will be, if the plan continues as we have been informed. I would like for the council members and the developer to be asked if they would be upset if this was happening to them in their own personal house, the view being blocked, especially in our case. At our age, we thought this was our forever home to spend the rest of our lives. It will be a definite quality of life change, as we love sitting out back and, you know, looking at the, the view. I implore the council and developer to consider limiting the build of two-story homes that would be right behind our properties, and limit those behind us to one story on the whole length of Cheyenne Trail North and South. Noted, the new homes recently built, the structured homes, have been single-story homes also. If possible, an alternative solution, may the developer or council submit a plan to have a buffer behind our houses, since that has the well water pumps now. If not, then a possible change, placing a street placement behind our houses that would allow a buffer between existing and new homes. Another concern is the drainage by us at 217 Cheyenne Trail North. Our home was built by McVie Homes, and we've always, every time we have a big rain, it's like a big flood area. It just comes down and, you know, torrents, like a river running. So, we're concerned about the new construction. What is that going to do to drainage? Another concern, we heard there's a water treatment plant, and why with all the land out here on this ranch, I know it's thousands, thousands of acres, why would they choose to put it so close to our, our existing neighborhood? I'm concerned from the smell from a plant being so close. I know one in North Arlington always had a horrible smell. So, what can we expect that you, the council, and the developer will do to keep any odors from coming from such a treatment plant away from us? And if possible, locate it to a further off area. Okay. And lastly, why were we not including the town hall meeting with the developer? And why now do we not have an opportunity to voice our concerns to them? If the plan is several years in the making, why can't the developer be flexible with us now? Certainly, things will be changed or different in the on.
Ma'am?
Deal. Yes?
Your time is up.
Ah, okay, thanks. Appreciate your time. Uh-huh, bye-bye.
Next up is Joanne Wilson. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. Please start when you're ready.
I am Joanne Wilson, 240 West First here. I want to talk about the P and Z Planning and Zoning Commission, and I request the council appoint me to the commission as a regular member. Not long ago, when an opening came up, Alternate One, who was appointed when Alternate One resigned, instead of moving me from Alternate Two to Alternate One, then when another vacancy came up, the council indicated they would advertise to fill this position. I've got somebody bleeding through, Shannon. Can you hear them?
Yes. If you're not speaking, please mute your phones.
Okay, I asked the council, should Alternate Two have been moved to Alternate One? And I certainly think Kristi King is a good commission member. I'm not saying that. And, but she was pointed rather to Alternate One than to the commission and left me just sitting there. Again, I request that the intent of the ordinance be followed, which you move up from Two to One to Commission. I asked for Sam Easton, said, oh, we changed that a while ago. So, I went in and asked for open records and was returned a letter says no substantiating documents. So, jeez, I'm not begging, but I believe I should be your next Planning and Zoning Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Lisa Wilson, and Joanne will read her comments.
Again, I'm speaking for my daughter Lisa Wilson, 240 West First, Rome, Texas. And we've lived here forever. A lot of changes are going on in our city. It appears that the city is wanting to establish a downtown district that will encompass our Old Town Rome District. A petition of more than 100 citizens was presented to you guys saying it's not wanted. It appears that had no meaning to the P and Z, and after a phone call from Sam Easton during that meeting, supporting this change, also, which I think was very inappropriate, if not actually illegal, the P and Z recommended forwarding as a recommendation to the council to approve. The borders of the area were badly defined, and the wording was strange, and when the council reviewed the document, it was tabled for further clarification. Now, other action has been taken with a previous council member, which may not have been appropriate if this was not a clear documented change. But however it gets worse, it appears that Old Town now is being called Phase One by city staff and signs that have been posted, and the unapproved downtown district is also being referred to by name. Do we have no shame? And I know right now, a lot of the council people, it's going to be hit and miss, are going to have to recuse themselves because of their living very close to the big project that we keep hearing about. Let's make sure that everybody that is involved should recuse themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Kristi King. Ms. King?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please start when you're ready.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Kristi King. I live at 207 Cheyenne Trail North, Rome, Texas. I come to you tonight to share my input on Agenda Item M, which is the Rolling V Ranch, number one, specifically Phase Three, which according to the preliminary plat will place home lots immediately behind the easternmost street of the Chisholm subdivision, Cheyenne Trail North and Cheyenne Trail South. It should be noted that this street of houses is the only street that is affected in this manner across all phases of the preliminary plats for RBR. All other platted adjacent, all other areas platted adjacent to the schools and Ellis Homestead have a green space as a buffer. As a member of the Rome community for the past 16 years, my neighbors and I have been under the impression that the land which skirts our back fences was designated as a right-of-way easement. Based on information received from the city administrator last week, it appears that while the previous owner of the Rolling V Ranch may have used the land as such, there was never any official designation of an easement in this location. According to the city administrator, this is a preliminary plating of an ETJ property in which no previous plat existed. Therefore, city ordinance did not require a 200-foot notice be provided to the homeowners on Cheyenne Trail North or South. Our neighborhood hence has had access to very limited information and minimal opportunity to give input. I ask that the council implore the developer to revisit the preliminary plat and consider placing even a small amount of open green space between the homes on Cheyenne Trail North and South and the new homes behind them. While I absolutely support change and the positive impact this development will have in the Rome community, I also respectfully ask that council implore PMB developers to revise the preliminary plat. Behind the homes on Cheyenne Trail North and South. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Deborah B. Kraft.
Good evening. My name is Deborah B. Kraft. I live at 360 West Second Street. And I would like to speak about the yes to the bond signs that are all over town. It says Phase One on there. That's the first we've heard about a phase. So, how many phases are there? When and where, you know, when are they going to start? And how much more are these phases going to cost us? And what are these different phases? You know, the council should be transparent with the people. They're asking for money now, but without giving us all the information for the future. Because if they do this phase, what's going to be the next thing? So, I would like for the council and the mayor to actually address this, and just to give the people the information so they have all the information, especially before they go vote, since this is on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Stasha Kronk. Ms. Kronk?
Good evening. My name is Stasha Kronk. I live at 215 Cheyenne Trail North, Rome, Texas. And I wish to voice my concerns regarding the proposed plat for the Rolling V Ranch addition. We purchased our home in 2017 largely due to the view and the country feel. We were informed by the previous owner that there was an understanding that the easement or green belt, whatever you would like to call it, between our property and the fencing of the ranch should always remain. With our proposed plat, my new view will be at least two homes immediately budding up to my property. Since we live on a hill, it'll definitely be the backyards of those homes. At the back of our property, we have experienced flooding issues with any heavy rain since we moved here. Our neighbors, Becky and Mike Goodjohn, have brought in a ton of dirt to help the issue, but the issue remains. So, my question would be, will the developer do anything to remedy the issue? My cost as a homeowner for drains and privacy fencing, et cetera, should not increase simply due to the fact that the developer has literally decided to build right on top of me. It would be one thing if the proposed plat identically modeled the design of the existing homes in our neighborhood. We have homes in the rest of the neighborhood that sit on almost half an acre or more. Our garages don't face the street. There's a definitely feel to our neighborhood of how this neighborhood was designed. Why does this plan not apply to the new development? If they wish to open our streets, do it. Why have residents of this neighborhood not been given a chance to voice their concerns until now? I have concerns as the opening of the street, increase of traffic, and people will alter mine and many of my neighbors' quality of life. I expect crime to increase. Our kids will no longer be able to play in the streets and the open front yards as they have in the past. And what about our streets? Our streets in this neighborhood are fairly narrow with no curbs, which is not ideal for increased traffic. And we will definitely have to have an increased watchful eye with regard to all of our safety. My primary request and recommendation would be to leave the easement green, our green belt between our homes and the new homes, and not open our streets. And if this can't be accomplished, although not ideal, then I request a road or a community area be, be placed behind the properties on Cheyenne Trail North and South ordering the addition. If they wish to open our streets to include this new addition, then I feel those homes should model the building of existing homes in our neighborhood. We shouldn't change our neighborhood just to open that up. Otherwise, it should remain a separate neighborhood. They need, if they want to open them up, they need to have similar lot sizes. They need to have similar design and structure. Otherwise, the Rolling V Ranch addition should remain separate. And if all else fails and the plat is implemented as planned, I request the developer be responsible for any flooding issues and issue vouchers or construct 10-foot privacy, privacy fences at the back of all current properties on Cheyenne Trail North and South. Thank you for your time, attention, and consideration of this very important matter.
Thank you, Mrs. Kronk. Next up is Shirley Mize, and she has asked me to speak for her. She is, the first part of her presentation is for Agenda Item G and H. I would like to address the planning and zone, planning and funding of both of the master plans. Are there volunteers, planning board members, that have been appointed to meet monthly recommendations to the council? The monthly yearly plans of these projects? If so, what type of group have you appointed? Do they have planning and development backgrounds, or real estate backgrounds, or city project backgrounds, or technology backgrounds? The flavor needed to succeed these projects. Also, what is the plan of funding for these master projects? Is it grants? Is it bonds? Is it tax revenue? Who, what group has been assigned to plan and resource these funds into monthly slash yearly projects with proper approvals? Some of these ideas in these master plans need to be revisited to make sure they fit or, or may need to make adjustments for that areas. Agenda Item I. On September 24th, 2020, a petition of 110 signatures was sent to the mayor and all seated council members, presented to council, to council meeting to oppose the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Section 33A, OTR, Old Town Rome, by amending the boundaries of the overlay district. As a citizen of Rome, I would like to request this council to consider this petition in opposing the amending boundaries of the overlay district. These overall boundaries are too big. To have a downtown district, these boundaries need to be redrawn to show a smaller area for our downtown district. You don't need to put the whole town in a downtown district, just part of it. Please do the right thing and oppose amending boundaries. Thank you for your time. Mayor, that is all we have. All right, thank you. All right. Before we move on, just a point of clarification, and I believe the city attorney that we can clarify a point of fact, if it's brought up in public presentation and not on the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The reference to bond signs that indicate that the city is in Phase One is incorrect. Those are not city signs. Those are private signs. Those were not created by the city. So, I just wanted to clarify that those are not city-sponsored signs. All right. Announcements from mayor and council members. First of all, the October 2020 events. We have our annual fall cleanup dumpster days. We have this typically in the spring and the fall. Due to COVID, we weren't able to hold the spring one, but we are holding the fall one. The location is behind the community center at 261 North School Road, and it will be Saturday, October 17th, and Saturday, October 24th, from 8:00 AM until the dumpster is full on that day. Then also, the annual trunk-or-treat has been moved from the family park. The location has changed to 261 North School Road, Saturday, October 31st, starting at 6:00 PM. It will be a drive-through trunk-or-treat, and more information will be put out on the webpages this week. And then finally, in regards to the Wise County Messenger's sample ballot, page eight of eight, which has items for Rolling V Water Control and Improvement District, number two, along with several other matters, including creating a water control and improvement district, issuance of bonds for utilities and roads, and a maintenance tax. This is not associated with the city of Rome. It is not something the city of Rome residents will vote on, nor do the proposed bonds or tax rate affect the city of Rome residents. There's a little confusion about that. It only affects anyone with property in the Rolling V district. You do not live or own property in Rolling V. You will not vote on this matter. And it is not an additional county tax either. It's a tax specifically for property within the Rolling V district. So, I want to clarify that. When you go to the polling locations to vote, it should not appear on your ballot if you're a city of Rome resident. Are there any other announcements from our council members tonight? Mayor Pro Tim Priest? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. The last time we had a meeting, Ashley was nice enough to point out the, the work that had been done at the city hall. And unfortunately, at that time, I had technical difficulties with my, with my ability to speak and respond. And so, I, I thank her for doing that. But I also wanted to take just a moment to talk about that, and then I'll, I'll get to an announcement that's, that's related. I just want to clarify that Terry volunteered to do all that work, and he's the one that did his homework, assessed what the needs were. He did the project planning. He was able to secure some additional funding, namely, the Easton family contributed to help pay for some of the plantings. He networked with Public Works. Unfortunately for Public Works, they were the ones that went in and killed all the poison ivy that was in the north flower bed, and also helped Terry to re-engineer the drainage. There was a big drainage issue that was over in that flower bed. He also did a lot of financial planning in that we, he found ways to provide the materials, the plant materials, the mulch, and those kinds of things. And then because Terry is Terry, he believes that we are all responsible for making and leaving things better than we found them. And so, he came up with a plan that hopefully will last for years with some basic maintenance over there.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'm going to have to cut you off. I'm sorry, but there's really, the agenda item is for announcements, and it doesn't allow you to respond to last week's meeting.
Okay, the announcement then? I'm sorry to have not done that properly. The announcement is that in the spring, there will be a spring plant sale to raise money for the beautification fund, and that will be sponsored by Citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements from council members this evening? Okay. If not, we'll go on to the monthly staff reports. We have our departments, administration, building and development, fire rescue, municipal court, police, and public works, as well as our boards, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. I've been asked to pull the police. As Chief Love, I believe, is on the line and has an announcement he would like to make as part of this. Chief Love, are you on the line? Not hearing Chief Love. Maybe he's having some technical difficulty. We'll hold that thought for a minute. Other than Chief Love, in the police report, do I have a motion to? Well, we don't need a motion on the monthly staff reports. We'll hold, we'll hold that until we get Chief Love on the line and come back to that. So, we will go on to our regular session, old business. So we will go on to our regular session, old business.
Sorry. Can we go back to?
McCabe, yes, sir.
Okay, there we go. Can we go back to announcements real quick before we move on? I just remembered something.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to congratulate Officer Pradia for what he did with saving a victim's life by performing CPR. He made it in the newspaper. That just goes to show that our officers are always going above and beyond their duties and capabilities. So congratulations, Officer Pradia.
Yes, thank you for remembering that. We appreciate Officer Pradia and his, his work here in the city, and thank you for remembering to bring that to our attention. All right, back to regular agenda, old business. We have Item D, update discussion and any necessary action regarding latest developments for COVID-19 and mitigation efforts and actions within the city. Other than just the update that the governor extended his order on October 7th, 2020. That is all I have really to report at this time. We're working on a few things behind the scenes, and we'll keep you up to date as needed at subsequent council meetings. Agenda Item E, update discussion and any necessary action regarding progress on the new website project. The city administrator and the staff, many of the staff have spent quite a bit of time in the conversion process and getting the website ready. And it went live on Wednesday, this past Wednesday, is that correct? So take a look at it. I'm sorry.
Yes, I believe it was Thursday, but maybe it was Wednesday, I have flak.
Okay, last week for sure, so take a look at that. They're still working on a few things, so if you see something, you know, either let them know what it is or give them kudos for getting, getting that out so we can improve our communications with everyone. Agenda Item F, update discussion and any necessary action regarding municipal complex project, including authorization for RFP to be issued. This item. So the municipal complex project, so the discussion item tonight, all of this is contingent upon the bond election, and that's in the hands of the voters. And so in keeping with the timeline previously discussed at city council meetings regarding the municipal complex project, we are requesting authorization for staff to prepare necessary requests or proposals to continue with the municipal complex project. So that is our request this evening to continue on with those according to the timeline that we had previously discussed. So I would entertain a motion or any other discussion that we need to have, Councilmember Easton?
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and get those RFPs prepared, just in case it does pass so that we can proceed in a timely fashion.
All right, I have a motion for authorization. Do I have a second on that motion? Councilmember McCowsky, let's see a second on that. All right, we will go for a vote. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let's go for a vote, Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, on to Agenda Item G, update discussion.
I'm sorry, mayor, just a moment. I know that we've got a very long agenda here. I see that Dr. Warren has just recently arrived. Could I propose that we move Agenda Item, let me get the correct letter? P? Earlier in to be, earlier in the list to have it be the next agenda item?
Yes, we can do that to accommodate, we have Dr. Ryder Warren, and as Mr. Easton indicated, Agenda Item P is an update and presentation by our Northwest Independent School District Superintendent, Dr. Ryder Warren, on the state of the district voter approval tax rate election and bond election. So, Dr. Warren, thank you for making some time to be with us this evening and give us some more information on all of these items.
Well, mayor, good to see everybody. Council, thank you for letting me come. I was thinking about this just this morning. This will be my fifth time talking to you. I can't believe I've been here five years, but I really, really do enjoy coming to you every fall semester and, and just kind of giving you an update. We got a lot to talk about tonight, so I appreciate the, I appreciate the, the ability to come in front of you. Sorry, we can't be there face to face. It's a weird world that we live in right now, but I'll look forward to seeing you guys again when we can, when we can get there in person. Okay, so I think you have, you have my presentation up there, and who's, who's going to control that for me?
I am, sir. This is Cynthia, North of City Administrator.
Thanks, Cynthia. All right, so council, I will go through this, and if, if, if something I say confuses you or I don't say it plainly enough, just stop me right there. We can do that, or I'll answer any questions for you at the end. Whatever, whatever you want to do, it will not bother me. Today was the first day of our second nine-week grading period. This is where we're up to on learning preference. We have two different platforms that we're on right now. We have in-person learning and we have the new remote learning program that COVID brought on. Folks, 79% of kids in Northwest ISD, that's about 20,000 kids. We've got about 20,000, starting today, we, we started the school year about 75%, and we had quite a few parents decide to bring their kids back onto campuses this second nine weeks, the second quarter. So we got about 20,000 kids walking around today in their schools, all 30 schools, and about 5,500 kids are going to be on remote. Go ahead, Cynthia, thank you. If you have any questions about what, what we do and how we're doing on, the one thing I'll say is, I have been so proud of our kids, of our staff, of everybody in our schools right now, because they've been following the safety protocols to the letter. They've been doing a really, really good job. So I'm just very pleased. But all of that website right there can take you through everything that we've been doing from our in-person and our remote learning. The next slide is, that's a screenshot, I believe this was, I believe this was when we sent this to you, this was a couple of days ago. Those numbers have changed. We've got about, right now, we've got, I believe the number is 60 active cases, and we're up to about 52 recovered cases. But we did this just to be as transparent as we can for all of our families, all of our staff to show you. And you can, if you look down there toward the bottom of those line graphs, that's per campus. You can go to every campus and see how many, how many kids or staff have it or how many have recovered. And folks, it's pretty much happening exactly the way we thought it would happen. Our larger campuses, our comprehensive high schools, all three of them have more than 2,000 kids per campus. Those are getting the most. Our middle schools are a little bit less than that, and our elementary is a little less than that. We have some campuses that have no cases right now. So if you want to get, that's updated every night. When we have parents who, who come to us and say, my child has tested positive, or if we have a staff member say, I've tested positive, we update that. Okay, next slide. All right, just a, just a brief construction update. Right now, especially those, those school districts that affect the City of Rome families. Our aquatic center is, oh, yeah, our aquatic center is going very well. It should be ready to go right after we get home from Christmas. The PAC, the Performing Arts Center at Northwest High School is done. It is, it's ready for performances when we're, when we can put them all in. And Chisholm Trail Middle School Fine Arts Edition is going very well. I mean, I was in there just last week. It's completed, and we've got students in those, the choir room, the new band room, everything, it looks really, really good. Okay, so now for the bond and the VATRE. The bond, if, the, the, the bond, if, if, if you've been in the district for any amount of time, you know bonds have been a part of our lives for, for a long time. We average a bond about every three years. The election called the VATRE, the voter approval tax rate election, we've never done before. This is new for us. We've never asked permission to do this, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll explain to you why in just a second. Here's what we're going to have, and, and let's not talk about if we vote, let's just talk about when we vote, because we all need to vote. We've got so much stuff happening in our nation, in our state, and in here in ISD. I hope you're committed to voting. I hope you're committed to, to making sure other folks, that you mentor them to vote. But we've got three different elections for Northwest ISD starting today. We never do that, we never have three, but we have the Board of Trustees election that we always have in May because of the governor's order to close. It was postponed in November, and the bond. Folks, we had a phenomenal committee. Sam was a part of that committee, really appreciate his work, but we had, we had, Sam, we probably had about 40 to 45 people who showed up religiously all last fall to work on this bond or work on the recommendations of the bond. And they recommended to the Board of Trustees the bond to be held last May, and it got delayed too, so that's delayed until November. And then the voter approval tax rate election can only be done in November. By law, you cannot, no Texas school district can call a VATRE except in November. All right, so that's what we've got for elections. That's what we're dealing with. We continue to grow. COVID has not slowed our growth. At the end of this school year, we think we'll be north of 26,000 kids, and then you look at the next 10 years, we'll be approaching 40,000 kids. There's an outline of our school district. All those weird green shapes that you see, that's where we're tracking housing developments right now. Those are either guys on the ground turning dirt, building new homes, or they're about to. We're averaging 2,400 new home starts a year, every year right now, over 500 homes a quarter now. I'll give you a compare, three different housing developments right now that we're tracking. When I first met you guys, when I first came to my first Rome City Council five years ago, it was 45 housing developments. That's how, that's how popular we have become in, in the district. Here's our planning numbers. We plan for more than 1,000 new kids every year, but we're averaging about 1,100 more kids a year, over 6,000 kids every five years, and over 13,000 kids every 10 years. And, and you guys are a great example of this. If you look at the left side of your screen, we've got a long way to grow. We're only 25% built out with the 26,000 kids, and we've got a lot of room to grow and new developments coming in all the time. So the bond, as recommended by the Long Range Planning Committee last, last fall, is $986 million, .6 million. Now, this is more money than we, this is a bigger bond than we've ever asked for, and there's a couple of things that I want to explain to you on this. Number one, hold on, let's say, go back one more, yeah, thank you, ma'am. Number one is, if this bond is approved because of, because of the values, because of the industry that's moving in and into the entire district, the homes are coming in, if this is approved, we will not have to increase our INS tax rate by one penny. This will not cause a, any kind of a penny increase onto the existing tax rate that takes care of the bonds. All the bonded indebtedness that we have from previous bond, we have an interest and sinking tax rate that generates money for us to pay off our debt. The 986 would not cause that to be increased. In fact, the board was actually able to lower the INS rate three pennies this year, be able to do that. The, the second thing is, the reason why this is a bigger bond than in the past, the committee talked a long time about this. They wanted to do a great job for the kids and to make sure that we have enough space for the kids, and they did. They did an excellent job with their recommendations, but they also wanted to lengthen the time in between the net, this bond and the next. They wanted to give the taxpayers, the voters, more time in between elections. So instead of having one that over the next three years, they wanted to extend this maybe to five years, maybe even to six years. So that's the reason why they added, they made the recommendation and the board approved more projects for this bond, because they want more time in between bonds. So that, that, those are the reasons. So going through the, the bond information, this is how the Long Range Planning Committee organized the work. This is, this is kind of a template they've always used over the last three or four bonds. Growth, renovations, technology, safety and program. So if you go through the server, the next several slides, number one, here you go. Yep, one more, there you go. We've never had a bond to build seven schools, but again, again, this, we've added more projects to this. This bond would fund seven new schools. Three brand-new elementary schools for our growth, one new middle school for our growth, and then replacement campuses for Hatfield, for Seven Hills and for Pike. Here's the, here's the thing, and I've, I've had this question asked before, you know, why are we doing replacement campuses? And, and really, it is about the growth that we're sustaining. We have a model school forever level that we have. Elementary schools in Northwest ISD are going to be 850 kids. Middle schools will be 1,200, and high schools will be 3,200. Now, here's the reason why we did that. We started rolling up our numbers, and I just told you, we have 26,000 kids and we're only 25% built out. When we get up to 95% to 100% build out, when we're done building, that's, that model of school, that size of school is the difference from having 100 campuses other than 130 campuses, because if we stuck with the, with the, if we stuck with the smaller schools, because, you know, in the, in the days that I, that Northwest ISD were building schools, we had some elementary's that were 450. We had some that were 650. We had some middle schools that were 900. We had our high schools at about 2,000 to 2,500. But if we stick to those larger schools, our taxpayers will have to fund virtually 30 campuses less than we would with the, with the smaller model. So all the schools that can be expanded right now, the, the current, the current schools that we can be expanded right now, we're expanding them. But the schools that we can expand, Hatfield's a great example. Hatfield is right there by my office, by Northwest High School. It's a 450-student school. We do not have the land to expand it to 850, and the infrastructure within it, the size of the cafeteria, the size of the library, it just can't be expand, expanded 400 more kids. So we're going to do, we're going to build a new building for Hatfield. Plus, Hatfield's the only campus, only elementary campus we have in the entire school district that's not a neighborhood elementary school. None of our kids can walk to school, none of our kids can ride their bikes to school. So we would, we want that in our, in a neighborhood to be able to do that. So we're going to find a neighborhood around, around the central campus to be able to do that. Seven Hills is the same thing. We've actually already expanded Seven Hills from 450 to, to, to 650. It doesn't have the infra, infrastructure to be able to do it again to 850. We actually have the land at Seven Hills to build the new school right behind the current school to use, to be able to build a brand-new school at that site, and Pike's the same thing. We can't expand Pike anymore to be a 1,200-student middle school. So that's the reason why we're doing those new schools and plus the additions to that. So we've got school population growth, go ahead. We have, go, go, go another slide. Thank you, ma'am. Northwest High School, we'll see a lot of funding put into that. The bond of 2017 actually expanded Byron Nelson and Eaton to the 3,200 model that we have. This bond would expand Northwest. Northwest, we would do a lot of work remodeling in, you know, it's our oldest comprehensive high school, so we do a lot of remodeling within it to get it to the same, the condition as Eaton and Byron Nelson. Go ahead. All right, Pike, again, we would replace, go ahead. And then there's the, there's, there's the work we would do for Chisholm Trail. I threw in the, the work we were doing, that this bond would actually fund for Chisholm Trail, the safety and security mechanisms, technology, PE athletics updates, all the instructional spaces that we would upgrade at Chisholm. And then, next one. And then, of course, we talked about those replacement campuses, next one. And there's, there's, there's the actual information at Seven Hills, and then the next one is Prairie View. Prairie View would get those, would get those improvements. Actually, this bond, and the committee, the committee did a really good job with this. This bond would touch all 30 of our campuses to refurbish them where we need to, though we could gain that consistency across the district. Next one. Okay, if you guys have, have listened to me at all these last few, five years, you guys know that I do a great job rapping about our state legislature. I can really, really do a good job of that, but let me, let me give them some kudos. The one, one of the things they did really, really good in the education world this last legislative session, they have mandated through House Bill Three that all Texas school districts have a full-day pre-K program within the district. And, and folks, that's a good, that's a good plan, that's a good. That's a good idea. Research shows that the kids that qualify, the families that qualify for pre-K, if we can get them into school as four-year-olds, academically, they're so much further alone along they go through the school. So that's a really good thing. So all those campuses, we will add pre-K classrooms, the, the new buildings that we're building. If, if this is approved, we will, we will put those in there. So that was one thing. I'll get back to gripping about them, but that's one good thing that they did. Okay, go ahead. Okay, there's all the list of renovations. Now, if you go down to the very bottom of each of these slides, you'll see a website. It says NISDTXbond.org. If you want to get really, really into the weeds about everything that's gonna be done, you can go there and you can do everything. So go, we got renovations. Go ahead. We've got technology and safety and security. And then go one more. And then, so that's the, those are the five areas. Now, go one more, please, ma'am. Okay. So this is how the state of Texas, when you go to vote, this is how the state of Texas is now making Texas school districts organize their bonds. The, our school boards no, no longer have the ability to organize a bond the way they want to. It's mandated. So, so you will see, when you vote, you'll see four different propositions. And this is forever district in the state. There'll be four different propositions for all bonds in the state. So Proposition A is the biggest one by far because most of our, most of our projects are for growth or general needs. But if we need to do any kind of work on recreational facilities, for tennis courts, for baseball fields, track fields, anything like that, that has to be in Prop B. If we work on any of our stadiums, we've got the big stadium. We've got several other smaller stadiums all across the district. If we need to do any work, that's Prop C. And then I have no idea why they did this. If we need to buy technology for our kids or for our staff, we have to separate it in the Prop D. Again, I have no idea why they thought that that would be a smart thing to do, but they did. The other thing that we have to do is at the end of every, if you look at, these are the actual ballot language. This is what you'll see when you go to your voting machine. You will see this is the actual language. At the end of each proposition, we have to put, every school district has to put, this is a property tax increase. I've already told you that this will not increase, increase the tax rate if approved, but we are adding debt, we are extending our debt. So by law, we have to put that disclaimer in there. Okay. So that is, that is everything about the bond. The next one shows you the actual money amounts for each proposition. You have to vote for each proposition, yes or no. And then the next slide tells you, shows you the actual projects in each of those categories. Okay. So VATRE. We've never done this before, but we are asking permission to add four point six-three pennies onto our M and O tax rate, the maintenance operation. All right, go one more down. All right. Here's a history of our tax rate. If you look, and most Texas districts have two tax rates. M and O, M and O is maintenance and operation. It's what we use to, to run the school district day to day to day. Mostly, it pays for people. Ninety percent of our M and O budget is people's salaries and benefits. The three thousand people that we employ, that's for the salaries. That's ninety percent of our budget for every. You can go all the way back to 2010, and we've always been at an M and O rate of a, of a dollar four. The new, you know, a couple of years ago, I came to the city council meeting. I started talking to you that the, the legislature was gonna create a new finance plan, a school finance plan. They had not done that in twenty years. It's killing us right now because for the fast-growth school district in the state, there's about eighty school districts in the state that are called fast growth, which Northwest is definitely fast growth. We are seeing really, really horrible reductions in revenue. So the permission that we are asking, we're not asking to go above and beyond the money that we've always had. We're asking permission just to get back to the rate that we had to, to have the money that we used to have that we're, that is actually being cut now. Twenty nineteen, we were forced, the, the school board did not have any option from House Bill Three but to lower our rate by those seven pennies. And we were supposed, we're supposed to lower it another six pennies this year. That's why we're asking permission to get that funding back to keep our, to keep our budget on track and balanced of what we have. All right, go, go to the next slide.
Dr. Warren, may I?
Yes, Sam. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you, Cynthia, could you go back to that previous slide? I know that you are doing an excellent job of presenting the facts, that you cannot actually campaign for or against any of this.
Yes, sir.
I get that. I am not restricted by that. Okay? I'm looking at your M and O tax rate, the VATER. And as you said, over ninety percent of that M and O tax rate is for paying your employees, which includes paying our teachers, which are the people that provide educations to our students and our children. So I personally would like to see it as high as reasonably possible because we need the finest teachers in the state for our children. So I just want to encourage people that when they look at this VATER and they look at that, it's, the, the net is gonna be zero. But we need to stop and think of, this is for our teachers. I'm sorry for the interruption. Please continue, Dr. Warren.
Sam, Sam, you interrupt me anytime you want to, Big Ben. Okay, go to the next one. So this is what we're asking for. We, right now, we are losing ten to fifteen million dollars per year in revenue. That's the revenue we've had in the past that we don't have these last two years, and we won't have as we go through this reduction from House Bill Three. We are asking our electorate for thirteen pennies. And by law, Sam, and you just said it very correctly, by law, we can ask for an additional thirteen pennies. That will generate twenty-one million dollars per year. Now, what the twenty-one million dollars will get us? It will get us back the money we're losing from House Bill Three, and it'll also take care of the growth that we always have because of the number of staff and the number of things that we have to add to our M and O because of the growth. So basically, it will allow us to balance our budget with the money that was, that has, we've lost and the money that we always have to add because, you know, we, we hire almost a hundred more teachers every year to our, to our current teaching, just to keep up with the, you know, with the growth that we have. So that's, that is the, that's the reasoning behind asking permission for this. Go ahead. Cynthia, please. Thank you. So what we're looking at is we're trying to maximize our tax rate, and we are gonna get into our baseline campus budgets, our program budgets, because we've gotta be disciplined enough. And again, the number one driver of everything we do is just making sure, especially at the teacher level, that we have, we, we don't have to be the best-paying district, especially at the teacher level. We don't have to be number one, but I want to be very highly competitive. In this area, we have, we have a lot of good school districts around the state in this area and everything like that. We've gotta be competitive to get the very best teachers in here and the very best crew. If you look at that tax, if you look at that slide, we actually were considering doing a T R E last year. The first year of House Bill Three, the biennium, was last year. We, we adopted a twenty-million deficit budget, but the, the state forced us to delay it. No Texas school district could call one. The HB Three canceled the process for last year. So this is the year we adopted the twenty-five-million-dollar budget and to be able to that. So here's the actual language on the, on the ballot. And, and again, this is another thing about just being who we are and me not liking the state system. But thirteen pennies will actually get us thirty-three million dollars. That would, you know, our values are so good, thirty-three million dollars can come from those thirteen pennies. But because we are a Robin Hood district, the state is gonna take their cut. We still have to send money to other districts to balance their budgets. So out of the thirty-three million, we would be able to keep twenty-one million after the state takes their cut out of it. And here's the, here are the differences in the tax rates. Go, Cynthia, go a couple of more, please. Okay. So there's the difference between last year and this year. We're gonna go from a dollar forty-two to the dollar forty-six, six-three. Here's the thirteen pennies. So this last year, we were, we had to lower our M and O to ninety-seven. This year, we were mandated. Go one more, Cynthia, please. Thank you, ma'am. We were, we, by law, we were gonna have to drop it to point nine-one-six-three, and that's the difference. There's the thirteen pennies that we're asking permission from the dollar thirty-three to the dollar forty-six. So that's what we're asking permission to do so. All right. So if you're gonna go the next one, I know none, nobody here falls into the group of sixty-five years or older, but if you know anybody, make sure that they understand as long as they've done their paperwork with the appraisal district, school, school elections does not increase any amount paid for those if they've done their paperwork and if they have not done anything extensively to their homes. And then the voter information, you guys know this. Early voting started today. Election Day will be on the third. And then, again, you can get onto our website and look at anything that you want. Go ahead, Cynthia. You can go anything that you, any information you'd like to see on either the bond or the VATRE. And the only thing that I ask you to do, and Sam is exactly right, I cannot advocate for or against any elections. I'm prevented by law. I would just like you to mentor your citizens, mentor all those of you, please vote. I don't, I don't think voting is an American privilege. I think it's a duty. So please make sure that we, that we vote and get, have our voices known. So guys, we really appreciate you all, the leadership that you show in your community, the leadership that you have for our families out there. We really do appreciate you. And just know, I always say this every year I come to see you, any support you need from the district, if, if we can do anything for you, we'll, we'll step up to the plate. We just appreciate it. Okay. Michelle, that's all I have for you. Just whatever questions that y'all have.
All right. Thank you. That's a great presentation, lots of information. We will make sure that's shared for our citizens to get the presentation as well. Are there any questions from our council members? Any comments? All right, not hearing any. Thank you, Dr. Warren, for taking the time to educate us a little more.
I appreciate that. Thank y'all. Have a good meeting.
Yes, sir, you too. All right. We'll go back to our regular session old business. We left off at Agenda Item G, which is update discussion and any necessary action regarding the Master of Thoroughfare Plan project. We are continuing to meet on this project, have a meeting scheduled for next week, and should be bringing something to the council in the next couple of meetings. Final plan on that. Agenda Item H, update discussion and any necessary action regarding the Parks Master Plan project. We have a meeting scheduled, and we'll be bringing some more information and final plans to the council here in a couple of meetings. So that's still going. So on to Agenda Item H, discussion and any necessary action regarding proposed amendment of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, Section 33A, OTR, Old Town Rome, by amending the boundaries of the overlay district. Before we get started on any of the discussion, Councilmember McCabe has recused himself from the discussion and voting on this matter. So just want to state that for the record. So. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor? I think you said Item H. I just wanted to clarify, it's actually Item I.
Oh, oh, yes, it's Item I. I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying. Yes, Item I. And Councilmember McCabe has recused himself from Agenda Item I, which is the proposed amendment. So where we left off with this discussion item from the last council meeting, this was tabled. You were presented in the last meeting with the 2004 ordinance as it stands with the overlay district. And was pointed out that there are some areas that are included in that 2004 ordinance, which include the Crown Point subdivision in it. And typically, in, in, on the street, we refer to Crown Point as its own area and Old Town Rome as its own area. But what was presented to you that passed council, passed P and Z for recommendation onto council is this proposed amendment to the boundaries. And we had some discussion about where those boundaries were. Where it was presented to the planning and zoning, it was, there was a public hearing on this. And so we've done our public hearing and got the meets and bounds for this proposed boundary. If council wishes to change the boundary, then we will need to get meets and bounds specifically for that, hold another public hearing, and in essence, start over. So I wanted to bring that back to the council, let you know that before we continued on with any more discussion on the boundary lines. Councilmember Easton, I see a hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had plenty of opportunity to consider the current meets and bounds, to consider some other proposed meets and bounds, and also consider the petition that was submitted at the previous meeting. And I reread the, the heading on the petition. If I may, just read it to everyone, please, that the reason for the petition. Let's see. "We, the undersigned affected by the proposed name change, do hereby protest against any change to the name of Old Town Rome to District, Downtown District, and the boundary changes." Now, the name, I'm not worried about. I don't consider, I don't, I don't care about the name. Okay? We can call it, we can leave it Old Town Rome, and if that makes people happy, that's wonderful. We can leave it Old Town Rome. But when we start talking about the, the boundary for this, for this overlay district, the original boundary, and Cynthia, if you would scroll up one, please. Right, we can see that dash line represents the original boundary. That's pretty much a fairly meaningless boundary. So I want to be respectful of the people that signed that petition. And I'd like to enter into our discussion that instead of changing the boundary, that we eliminate the overlay district because of its meaningless boundaries. The sad part of that, and this is why I find this very difficult, is that when you look at our comprehensive plan, and yes, we do reference it by the term downtown district, but still call it overlay, Old Town Rome Overlay District, that, that long-term plan was actually, i- if you read into it, it's all about focusing on putting money into that part of Rome. It's for the city to, I mean, it's for the city at large to invest our funds into the Old Town Rome neighborhoods. I absolutely respect the people that signed that petition, that they do not want the change in the boundaries. That, I don't understand it, but I respect it. And since the original boundaries are, I find, again, they're so large, so encompassing, it's to be meaningless. I would like for people to consider during this discussion, one of the options are that we just eliminate the Old Town Rome Overlay District and perhaps start over with a new discussion for the P and Z.
Okay. Other thoughts from our council members?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, and I'm sorry, I don't have them tonight, but in Carvin, you may wanna contribute here, but if you eliminate the overlay district, right now it's Section 33A, primarily it deals with, within the, the boundary, the old boundaries, the current boundaries. It primarily has rules and regulations in addition to the base zoning. So that would mean all of the, I say all of them. I mean, there's basically about seven, seven points that this overlay of rules and regulations that are currently in this Old Town Overlay District that you would be eliminating, if I understand the discussion. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand that that means, like, right now, for instance, it talks about off-street parking. So there's two off-street parking spaces that would be required for each resident in each location, which shall be constructed of four-inch-thick reinforced concrete to the property line. Rear yard setback requirement should be a minimum of fifteen feet. Front yard setback shall be twenty-five feet from the front property line, excluding decks, awnings, and carports. Side yard minimum shall be five feet, and on a corner lot, fifteen feet towards the cornering streets. Setbacks to the garage shall be a minimum of twenty-five feet. Rear yard will be fenced for the privacy fence, which will be a minimum of six feet in height or chain-link fence. or chain link fence. Um, and then there's a special exception, which I was actually going to be bring back to the P and Z and the council because it's redundant with item, one of the items I just read, item number three. Um, but again, I just want to make sure that, I mean, there are current rule, we're talking about an overlay district that are current rules and regulations in addition to the base zoning of whatever is inside that boundary that you see, that you saw on the screen, that you would be doing away with.
Okay. Uh, and if we change anything zoning that requires a public hearing, so a discussion to eliminate that would require some more notices and things before we could even entertain that discussion.
Right. But also, Cynthia, and thank you for bringing that up. Some of those items, when this was created, were, people were thinking of, because of the size of that overlay district, they were thinking of these as being ordinances that applied almost, almost universally. Okay? So we should, we should revisit each of those as should they be ordinances that are applied to all of Rome. Okay? Um, but again, our citizens have voiced a, I mean, very strongly against changing this overlay district. And again, when I look at the original boundaries, they're just not, I mean, again, it shows going through, uh, Crown Point, but it doesn't actually show those, any of the streets or the houses associated with Crown Point. Um, I, I believe the, the overlay district is, um, an obsolete concept right now, and we shouldn't talk in terms of changing it. Um, I say, take what we can of it, keep it for the entire city, but then let's start over and let's find something that works. Um, again, I, I, I have to go back to the, uh, the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is talking about how much money that we want to funnel into, uh, that reduced-size overlay district. Okay? But I can understand that, that, that they don't want to change the size. They don't want to, they, they don't want to change in name. Of course, they don't want to change the name. Um, but I'm thinking, because with a change in the overlay district, we are going to have to revisit the comprehensive plan. We're also, I mean, th- th- this is a huge change.
Well, and one thing, Councilmember, yes, you're, you're exactly right. I think if I understand it, and I think I see Steve Knight on here, but as I understand it, um, the discussion on P and Z, the direction from the council, um, was to clean up the zoning ordinance, and the P and Z was choosing to start with the Old Town Rome Overlay District. And then you had the comprehensive development plan that kind of came on board and said, um, several things, but one of them was looking at the creation of a downtown district and developing that. So I think the idea was then to look at how that folded into, they wanted to start with the Old Town Rome Overlay District, and they wanted to look at all of the things that I just read. But if you notice, for instance, all the things I just read were primarily for residents versus retail and commercial. And in that, in that area of the current overlay district, there's also commercial and retail. And so I think the idea was to say, okay, let's start, uh, let's go ahead and shrink that boundary down to match the goal of a downtown district, and then look at what would, what would those development codes then look like for that area to support, um, creating this vision of a downtown district overall, which is a mixed-use area. So you've got, you know, you've got the older homes and you've got the businesses. You've got even on, uh, First Street and, and, uh, Main Street, some of the older City Hall, for example. Um, you know, how can we make accommodation to, uh, maintain that history of those buildings, the history of the old homes, um, and yet still have a cohesive and attractive, um, quaint, um, downtown Old Town Rome? And so I think that was the idea, was not only to address some of these items, but also to look at, okay, what would be, how do we want to look at some codes that would help further this vision of a, of a downtown district that's mentioned in the comprehensive planning? Um, Steve?
Cynthia, it sounds like you're trying to convince me. I happen, I happen to like the idea. I like the comprehensive plan. Um, I'm in favor of what they have done. But the thing is, they presented us a, uh, petition. Now, it doesn't have voter IDs on it. Okay? But I, I'm going to hope that, uh, each of the 110 people that signed it are registered voters. Um, it's what you need on a petition. But, um, I'm, I'm sorry, you can't ignore, I mean, we can't disregard the 110 people that signed that.
I'm sorry. I'm really not trying to convince you. I'm just trying to make sure I've got information out there for y'all to consider.
Okay.
Mayor Protim's got a hand. Um, can everybody mute, uh, your phones? Cause we're getting some feedback and it's hard to hear the speakers if your phone is not muted when you're not speaking. Thank you. Mayor Protim, go ahead.
Hi, excuse me. I just had, uh, some questions here. Um, uh, we, I, I, we looked up some information about overlay districts and, and particularly looked at the one at Roanoke, which is quite a lengthy document. But the overlay district, and I, and I don't want us to get hung up on the word district here. The area that was looked at in, in, uh, 1990 was a picture of what the folks that were doing the planning and zoning and that came up with the ordinance thought that would be Old Town Rome and that it would be a mixture of homes and businesses, retail, commercial. It turns out that on the east side of the railroad track, where Crown Point and, uh, the Red Bud and Hickory and those streets and, and Front Street, Front Street and Virginia Street, there's not been that retail development over there. So as we look at it today, the purpose of the overlay area was for those, that part of town that was a multi-use area. It's a combination of retail, a combination of commercial, combination of, of residential churches. It's a multi-use area. The east side of the track did not, has not developed that way. It has remained primarily a residential situation. Now, just hold that thought. Those overlay districts, whether we're talking Rome or Roanoke or Grapevine, are made with certain requirements as people build and remodel, uh, as retail come in and want to expand into a residential home and convert that into a retail business. For example, it is there to say, if that happens, then there, there are some stipulations involved. And so what the, what it is, is, um, its purpose, I believe, is then to help protect the residential folks and also the integrity then of how that area looks and the types of businesses and, uh, retail commercial that comes into that area so that it doesn't, um, cause negative implications. Now, just hold that thought. Then we get to the, to the master plan and we talk about that we would like to, um, highlight a certain area, namely on Main Street, and that we try to cultivate that and make improvements with sidewalks and parking and lighting and such as that, where it becomes very attractive then for retail to commercial development. Those are two separate things. They are not the same. And yes, a future business district that may begin along Main Street could morph into something bigger than that, wider than that, but the overlay protects the integrity of Old Town and what we visualize that to be, um, with that overlay requirements for consideration. So I know that there was some confusion, at least I thought there was some confusion, that, that some people thought the overlay district was going to be that area, um, where we were going to focus on trying to upgrade and come up to code and have parking and get our, um, sidewalks in. So it was handicap accessible, uh, along that Main Street corridor. Um, so the overlay district is not what, what I think that some people thought that it was. It's there to protect the integrity of the character of Old Rome and whatever, whatever we want to call it. Um, so I, I just wonder if there's not confusion then, um, about what we look at as far as our master plan and the purpose, the original purpose. I'm not saying that the overlay district language, you know, 30 years later, doesn't need to be updated and to become current, um, because a lot of things change in 30 years. Wha- what was done, um, uh, back in the, um, 2004, whatever date that was, uh, you know, they, they upgraded that from, from something that happened 14 years before. So, um, it, I just think that maybe the terminology has been confusing. Um, so I, I'm like, Sam, I don't, you know, I li- I like Old Town. I like, I like the name. I understand that. But the overlay district is something different than what we've been discussing about, uh, encouraging through improvements, um, a retail corridor along Main Street. So I'm just wondering if, if there's not some confusion there.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I kind of agree there. I think we can accomplish the aims and goals of the comprehensive master plan without doing anything. We don't have to change it at all. And the people there don't want it changed. So I think we can accomplish what we were initially set out to do in the master plan. Just leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your thoughts. Um, uh, let's see. Councilmember Mikowski, do you have any thoughts on that? You want to add? Any comments?
No, I kind of agree with Sam and Kenny on this. Um, you know, I, we need to keep the name the same, Old Town Rome, but, you know, we need to make it more of a useful area. So it's going to be residential, some, some small businesses within it, could be salons or, or whatever, you know, but it makes it more viable, more, uh, able for growth within. So I, I agree with these two.
Okay. All right. So what I'm hearing from the council, um, tonight is that they don't wish to take any action on this. Um, and if that is the case, then as long as there's not a motion, then we will take no action and the motion will, um, just be, it will be dead for, for the most part. Um, so if, if that's the will of the council, then let me know if I'm not interpreting what you're saying.
Oh, you are correct. We, we don't, I don't think we want any action on this. Let's just let it go.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. Then, uh,
Do you need a motion in, uh, a second or?
Nope, nope. No action taken is the same effect of, uh, just basically denying it. All right. So, uh, without a motion on the table, we will go on to our next agenda item. We have a public hearing, item J. Um, I need to read this first and then give you an update. It says, "Rome City Council to conduct a public hearing to consider a request for a carport at property being described as legal acres point 209, Lot 2, Block 1, Subdivision Rolling Hills Edition, also known as 321 Red Bud, Rome, Texas 76078. Um, due to, uh, the rescheduling of the meeting that was originally supposed to be last Thursday, um, our public hearing will be, uh, on Thursday, October 22nd. So we will not be holding the public hearing tonight. So along with that, Agenda Item K, which is the same matter, due, um, October 22nd. Um, City Attorney, do we need to table this to continue it? Yes. Okay.
Yes, you do.
I would need a motion on, uh, the action item, which is regular session, new business, item K, discussion and any necessary action regarding a request for a carport at legal property being legal acres point 209, Lot 2, Block 1, Subdivision Rolling Hills Edition, also known as 321 Red Bud, Rome, Texas 76078. Do I have a motion to table this? Councilmember Easton, I see a hand. Councilmember McCabe, I see a hand too. Who wants to be the first? You want to be the second? Councilmember McCabe? All right. Councilmember Easton, I see for the first. Councilmember McCabe for the second. Let's go for a vote to table. Uh, Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Mikowski?
Aye.
Thank you. And Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion is, uh, carries, uh, it's tabled to the 22nd. All right. On to Agenda Item L, discussion and any necessary action regarding a proposed preliminary plat for Rolling V Ranch, RVR number two, phases one to through two, being described as 186.19 acres, 513 lots, 2.78 lots per acre, 68.90 acres, 19 open spaces out of the Smith County School Land Survey, abstract number 743, in the city of Rome, ETJ, Wise County, Texas, as requested by PMB, Rolling V Land LP. Before we get started on this, um, I have to indicate for the record that Councilmember Mikowski has recused herself from discussions on Agenda Item L, um, being within the feet of this property, um, has recused herself. All right. So, uh, to, uh, open this up, this preliminary plat was presented to, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, and uh, it, it was approved, recommended for approval to the council, which is why it is before you today. Um, I do need to remind you that, um, plating in the ETJ, uh, we have an agreement with Wise County, and that's why the plating in the ETJ and the county comes to us when it's our ETJ. Um, and, uh, it, it is a ministerial duty. If a plat meets the requirements set forth, um, then it's a ministerial duty. Um, anything to add to that, City Attorney?
No, Mayor, you said it correctly. Uh, if the plat as submitted meets the requirements of the development agreement in this case, and the city engineer confirms that fact, then the city is obliged to approve the proposed preliminary plat.
Okay. And I will turn to, uh, the city administrator and, uh, has the staff, the city engineer and everyone within the city that should review this, had that opportunity and addressed any deficiencies.
Um, the staff has reviewed it and the engineer has reviewed it, uh, and P and Z has recommended approval.
Okay.
So it meets the criteria. There's no, uh, there's no deficiencies. It meets the criteria that it needs to by law.
Okay. All right. So now we've got that, um, on the, on the record, um, we have heard several, um, comments in our public presentation, um, about some concerns. Um, I know the developer, Peter Pincops, is also on the line, um, and so, um, has had an opportunity to hear those concerns. Um, so I wanted to make sure everybody knew that as well. Um, uh, Councilmember Easton, I, I see a hand. Um, so I'll, I'll let you jump in real quick, um, with your comment. comment or question.
My very first comment is, yes, I do understand this is ministerial, Mr. Atkins, and what that implies. But, Mr. Pincops, we have some very strong feelings from quite a few of our citizens and I know that we have really no way of compelling you, okay, but is there, is there any room for negotiation? Is there something the city can do? Is there perhaps an accommodation that we can make or consider for you to consider putting some green space around the Chisholm neighborhood that is currently exists?
Can I interrupt there real quick? The plat that we're talking about right now is the one on the west side of 3433. So the, the conversation in the public input was in regards to the east side, so it would not be appropriate because for that discussion, we have another member of our council that will need to recuse themselves. So I want to make sure we.
You're telling in the opposite order for, for the PMZ meeting that I attended.
Okay. So if you'll hold.
Same order.
Okay. If you'll hold your thoughts on anything regarding the plat on the east side of 3433 in regards to the west side, do you have anything on that?
I do not.
Okay. Anything from anyone else on the council?
I have a couple of comments, if that's all right.
Yes, ma'am.
I have, I see that there are at least two entrances and, and one fire entrance on 34 that comes out to 3433 Road. And those entrances are all basically north of the school to give, to give just kind of a landmark. And that area has a 55 mile an hour speed limit. So I'm, I'm just want to be sure that the developer is working with Tech dot, city of Rome, the county, Newark, and the school district to make sure that we're not going to get into a huge safety item here. I, I already checked the enrollment of the schools and know that, that there's going to be an increase in the student body there of probably about between 33, 37%. There's going to be more cars and people going to and from work and there are other things I would go to. So I'm concerned about the speed limit. I'm concerned about the amount of traffic and I just want to be assured that that, that discussion is already in motion for, for the, for safety reasons. And that would be a concern that I have. That's it. That's my comment.
Okay. Peter Pincops is on the line. Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but there have been discussions and you are in discussions with Tech Dot on issues that need to be addressed on farm to market 3433. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. And I appreciate the concern and, and certainly sensitive to, to any safety issues around the school and, and the impact that, that our project will make on the community. So to take a, a bit of a step back, I want to be sure that, that everybody on, on council or, or folks that are, you know, listening in and hearing these conversations know that we, for a year or more, have been in dialogue with, with Tech Dot, with the city of Rome, with the city of Newark and with Northwest ISD for sure, and are, are, are planning to accommodate, you know, the improvements that we need to make to, to ensure that this project is safe for one, above, you know, anything else. And then also, as it relates to the schools, and I think it was, this was a, a good, good sort of fortunate timing to be on with our preliminary plat the same night that the superintendent presented their growth plans for the school district. But we, you know, we're in dialogue with the school district about sort of methodically and thoughtfully accommodating growth as we add residents and folks are coming in to build, you know, to allow land for the school district to build new elementary, middle, and then ultimately a high school campus if those are needed. And, and, and want everybody to know that, that, you know, sort of fundamentally, open communication and dialogue with the, the parties involved here has been a big part of our, our process. And so as it relates to Tech Dot, we have, as we go through construction design, we have applied for driveway permits for both the east side of the road and the west side of the road. We've done traffic studies and will be responsible for building any required improvements that are called for as a result of those permits and traffic studies along 3433. And additionally, we've also had dialogue with the city administrator and engineers about, about, I think it comes, needs to come through the city, but about requesting a reduction in the speed limit on 3433 down to 45 miles an hour, which is an administrative change that can be made at the request of the city. And so I just want you all to know that those are all discussions that we're having and, and will continue to have as we go through this. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hey, yeah, this is Councilmember Crenshaw. What I would like to know is to address the concerns of the people in Chisholm and in Ellis, on the preliminary plat shows looks like housing lots that butt right up against the back fences of some existing homes. Are there any plans to put a buffer between those neighborhoods?
Can I make sure that the conversation in regards to any buffer is specifically on the west plat at this time and we hold off any conversation on the east side?
Well, yeah, but the west plat that you just put up on the screen butts up against Ellis.
Yes, and so if we can.
And the same applies to Ellis as it does to the other neighborhoods where it shows housing lots that butt right up against the back fences of people's other homes and as you see there. Are there, would there be any consideration for a buffer zone there or, or something?
So I'm, I'm glad that, if it makes sense, I'll answer this question with respect to sort of each individual situation, but on the west side of the road, as, as our project abuts Ellis, you know, so what, the way that we plan it, we feel like is, is what makes sense. And specifically, one of the concerns that I heard raised related to drainage and, and want everybody to know that, so we're restricted from causing any additional drainage on the neighboring properties beyond what occurs today, okay? And so we're, you know, we plan significant infrastructure and grading plans, et cetera, that will cause us to capture our own drainage and we cannot cause additional problems for neighboring property owners as it relates to drainage. And so I want folks to take some comfort in that. And I know that the, I think that Kyle Wilder is on the call here and if it makes sense, he can sort of speak up to, to the cities.
Well, my question wasn't about the drainage. It was about the lots that butt right up against the back fences of the existing homeowners.
No, I, I, I understand and, and, and so what we're, what we're trying to do, I mean, the, the land plan that you see is, is our plan and it's what we think is the, is the best plan for, for a variety of reasons. What I want everybody to know is that, so we, we own across both sides of the road. We have about 3,600 acres of property. We're leaving close to 1,000 acres of open space across these projects that are going to be highly programmed, include extensive trails, lakes that folks can fish in, you know, waterfalls and all these natural features that are there today that are really truly remarkable. And while we understand the sensitivity to folks that own homes that back up directly to areas that will be developed, I just want you all to know that, you know, we are also allowing for and building these, these open spaces that will be really special and I think a real asset to homeowners, both inside Rolling B and, and, and the broader community. And.
Mr. Pincops?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate everything you're saying, okay? All the additional amenities you're describing, we will all enjoy those, okay? I believe it comes down to, is there any room for negotiation? Okay? Because as Mr. Atkins said, this is a ministerial duty, okay? When it comes right down to it, you can say no, there's no room for negotiation, there's no accommodation that we can make and we will pass this plat, okay? That, that's the bottom line of what's going to happen here. But I'm just asking you, is there any room for negotiation or is there some accommodation that you could ask for that, that we could provide to you?
I mean, the, the, so we're, I, I think, I hate to frame it this way, but, but I think that we're, you know, we're settled on the land plan. We feel like for a number of reasons, it's the, it's the, a land plan that makes the most sense and, and so we're not, we're not interested in, in changing it. I mean, we're meeting the requirements under the development agreement and under the codes that relate to it. And, and these are, I'm, I'm aware of and certainly appreciate the concerns of folks, you know, that have enjoyed the views of Rolling B through, through the years and just what I, what I can offer and, and what I want folks to take advantage of is, is access to the, you know, the amenities and trails and so forth that we're, that we're offering. But at this point, these lots.
Oh, the short answer is no.
That's correct. I mean, these lots are sold and, and, you know, we're, we're ready to go to construction on this phase.
Well then, based upon that, I'd like to make a motion that since this is ministerial, that we approve this plat.
Okay. I have a motion to approve on agenda item L. Do we have a second on that motion? Mayor Pro Tim Priest, you want to second that one? Thank you. All right, we'll go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Nay.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCauskey has recused herself. Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries three to one on agenda item L. All right. Now we'll go on to agenda item M, discussion and any necessary action regarding a proposed preliminary plat for Rolling B Ranch, RVR number one, phases one through three, being described as 219.23 acres, 697 lots, 3.18 lots per acre, 31 open spaces, approximately 51.06 acres out of the James B Farnsworth survey, abstract number 1417 and 991, Jacob Moffett survey, abstract number 554, Smith County School Land Survey, abstract number 743, in the city of Rome ETJ, Wise County, Texas, as requested by PMB, Rolling B Land LP. Before we get started on this, our Mayor Pro Tim Priest has recused herself from discussion on agenda item M and Councilmember McCauskey will be participating in discussion on agenda item M. So we will address this one. This is on the east side of 3433. So we've had some discussion about this plat being ministerial. So Councilmember Eason, I see a hand.
Mr. Pincops, do we have a note on this one also?
I mean, the, the answer's, the answer's the same. Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve this plat.
All right. I have a motion on the table. Do we have a second on this motion? All right, I'm looking. Councilmember McCabe, you're seconding the motion. Thank you. All right. So we'll go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tim Priest has recused herself. Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason?
Again, this is ministerial. We have no choice, people. Aye. We have to follow the law.
So that brings us to a two to two vote. So I'll turn to the city attorney. And when, in this case of a tie, then the mayor would exercise the right to vote. Councilmember McCauskey?
Yeah, I would just like to emphasize that since I was not part of L, I really don't know what transpired and, you know, so I couldn't give an honest vote on it.
Okay. Do you want more information?
Yes, I would like to hear what type of information we have available on that.
Okay.
Not for long in the meeting, but I know we're running late, but.
If I may summarize for Councilmember McCauskey, we, we asked if there was any accommodation or any room for negotiation for Mr. Pincops and he very kindly went into a lot of the details as to a lot of the green space benefits and he described a wonderful environment and I'm certain we will all appreciate it. But the bottom line is there's no room for negotiation when it comes to adding or discussing additional green space behind the houses separating the existing neighborhoods from the new ones. Did I summarize that well?
Yes, you did. All right, then I'll change my vote to a yea.
I would also point out, Mayor, the development agreement that we're subject to is, is what? 18 years old? This is not a new agreement. The recent amendment to the agreement were very minor changes in 2019. The base agreement was not changed and that was an agreement that was entered into by the city with the original owner of the property and has not changed in its fundamental basics for at least 15 years. And Peter can probably give me the exact date, but I mean, we're going back 15, 16, 17 years. That has been the agreement that's on the ground and has been for years.
All right. Thank you for clarifying. All right. So just to recap for the record, we have a motion on the table by Councilmember Eason to approve. We have a, a second on that motion by Councilmember McCabe. And then the vote is Councilmember McCabe for, Councilmember Crenshaw against, the Mayor Pro Tim Priest is, has been recused. Councilmember McCauskey is now saying yes. And then Councilmember Eason, you said yes, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So by my count, that's a vote of three, four and one against with one recused. So the motion would carry plat being approved. All right. Is there anything else from the city attorney that, are we good? Have we covered everything correctly? Thank you. I'm getting a thumbs up.
Yes, you have.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do just want to very quickly dovetail on to the issue that was brought up on the transportation with Tech Dot on FM 3433 that Peter had detailed how he's talked with them. Just to let you know that I have talked with them and the, and the master thoroughfare plan. Just to let you know that I have talked with them and the, and the Master Thoroughfare Plan Committee, which is currently meeting, has made Tech Dot aware of the development and the issues that are upcoming as well. So the traffic issue is being addressed as much as we can and will continue to be.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going on to our next agenda item. Mr. Pinkoff, thank you for being on the line with us this evening. Agenda Item N, Discussion and any necessary action regarding accepting resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and filling vacancies of the same. We have this on the agenda. You have one vacancy. We have received a resignation from a P and Z member. And if you accept that resignation, then that creates a second vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So can we have the name of who has resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission? Either the city administrator or city secretary?
Bob Coleman.
Okay. Mr. Coleman has submitted his resignation, so let's address that one first. So do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Coleman from the Planning and Zoning Commission? Councilmember McCabe, I see a hand. Councilmember Eason, are you seconding that motion? All right. Councilmember Eason is seconding the motion. Let's do a vote on that. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
And Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right, motion carries on the resignation. All right, so I will open it up to the council on discussion on the vacancies. But before we get there, city secretary, city administrator, did we put out information on the website about the vacancies? Have we been actively soliciting applications? One of the future agenda items from our last meeting was applications. And so I just wanted to see if we had, we had gotten any or we had advertised that.
We have not advertised since it was a future agenda item to discuss it at the next council meeting. We were leaving it to the council to decide.
Okay, thank you. All right, council members, I'll open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Eason?
This leaves us with three Planning and Zoning Commissioners. We have two alternates. Since we have no applications in, the alternates would, of course, fill those other two seats at the next Planning and Zoning Meeting. We have an election coming up in November. So I would like to table the appointment to these positions to a future council meeting following the election.
Okay. Point of clarification from the city attorney, if you table an item, doesn't it roll to the very next meeting? Can you table past?
It, it would roll back to the next meeting, and then they, it would be again, an open item, and you could table it again if you wanted to, but it, you would have to take that action the second time.
Okay, so if the council wanted to, to not address this at the next meeting, then correct me, would we just not take action tonight?
You have your choice of just taking some, somebody could make a motion to just take it off the agenda, or you could just take no action either way.
Okay. Thoughts from other council members?
Well, if we have two alternates, and that's what the alternates are for, I just don't see why we're waiting.
Okay. Councilmember McCabe, I see a hand there. Do you have some comments?
Yeah, so what exactly does our ordinance state on filling the vacancies? Does one and two alternates automatically, should we move them up? Or can we appoint others that are not alternates? What is our stuff state?
Okay.
But effectively, it has seven spots, the five places on the P and Z and then two alternate spots. So you would fill the vacancy as it comes up. So right now you have two vacancies on the P and Z, and you can vote to fill those two vacancies.
Mr. McCabe, I remember when we first added the alternates to the P and Z, there was a discussion as to whether alternates would automatically fill those vacancies. And the discussion came out that the answer is no. Alternate, alternates do not automatically become full-time members of the P and Z.
So that's discussion, but what's on paper?
That, no, that's what ended up on paper.
Okay.
Let's, city attorney, are, are we going off the ordinance? The ordinance would be a prevailing document over any discussion, is that correct?
Yeah, it's actually Section 8.2 of the zoning ordinance. And it, the last sentence says, "Alternative members shall be appointed when a vacancy occurs in the alternate membership at the council's discretion." So we don't have an alternate vacancy right now. We have those two positions filled. The other positions are filled as they come vacant by the council. And members shall be appointed at the discretion of the council.
So we don't have to fill that with the alternates? We can vote in completely different ones if we so choose?
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, if nobody else has any-
And it sounds like we need to take applications to fill the primary vacancies.
Okay, I, I see him by Mayor Pro Tim Priest and also Councilmember McCowsky. We'll start with our Mayor Pro Tim, go ahead.
I think that, I understand if we want to, to wait and mull this over just a little bit longer. But I think that the people that have, that we've appointed to be alternates, and they have given their time, they've educated themselves, they've, they've been available, they know what's going on with planning and zoning to some extent, depending on how long they've been an alternate. And I find it difficult to eliminate them from, from, from primary consideration because they've already paid their dues, so to speak. If they're interested in being on Planning and Zoning, you know, maybe that's a question we need to ask them. We've already heard from one. But the other one, you know, is she willing to, to step up and be a full-time member and not just an alternate? So I don't want to discount those two because if, if we have alternates and they're good enough to be alternates and they put their time and their energy into it, I'm not in favor of discrediting them in any fashion.
Okay. All right. Councilmember McCowsky, did you have some thoughts?
Yes, I do. I know we have the two alternates there, but I think we should probably table it from this meeting to the next meeting so that we can have it, maybe advertise for the positions, but also, again, review the two people. We'll find out if they are two alternates, to find out if they actually want to move up to be on the board. So-
Well, one of the, one of the issues we run into is one of our alternates that stated that she wants to be on the, promoted to permanent position on the P and Z is running for mayor, and we're not having a P and Z meeting until after the election. So to, it, it doesn't make sense to appoint her tonight, potentially after the meeting, after the election. I mean, because if she's elected mayor, then she would not be eligible to be on the P and Z. So I think visiting that, I mean, at the very least, forgive me, Mrs. Wilson, but it doesn't make sense to appoint you tonight since the next P and Z meeting is after the election. Now, if we would like to consider Kristy King, the other alternate for that position, I believe I saw Kristy, Kristy King was on, on this meeting earlier. She didn't submit an application, but I suppose we could ask her if y'all wanted to entertain that.
I see Kristy King is still a part of this meeting. So if she's there, we can ask her.
You know, I would hate to put people on the spot because if we're not giving opportunity for someone else outside, then I worry that we're not being fair. Councilmember McCabe, I saw a hand go up. Do you have another comment on the discussion?
No, Sam pretty much cleared it up with his quote or with his comment that it doesn't make sense to appoint someone if, you know, depending on how the election goes, they wouldn't be able to fill that vacancy, and then we're back in the same spot of filling a vacancy. And then, as you just stated, since we're not doing that for one, I think it would be fair that we don't do that for any vacancies. And we, we just kind of have to go from there and table it until after the elections, or well, to the next meeting, then the next meeting until we can fill those vacancies.
I kind of, I agree with that.
And Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Crenshaw?
I'll make a motion, we remove this from tonight's agenda, and we can always put it back on till, at the point in time when we can get the people's applications in.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Crenshaw to remove from the agenda. Is there a second on that motion? Councilmember Eason? Yeah, sorry, I, I saw a finger before I heard that. Councilmember Eason is the second. Let's go for the vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
Thank you. And Councilmember Eason? Was that an aye? I think you're muted.
Sam, I need to hear you.
All right, thank you.
Yea.
Mayor? Mayor, can I get clarification? It sounded like part of that motion then was you did want to direct staff to solicit applications? Or it sounded like it was?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we'll go on to Agenda Item O, Discussion and any necessary action regarding annual review of employee benefits. So staff, we met with our benefits broker that we've had for several years now regarding employee benefits, health, dental, life, that kind of thing. And to hear the rates increases and things like that. And based on those discussions, the city is going to see an increase in benefits of roughly 10%. But that was what we included in our budgeted numbers that was approved in our budget because we had that early indication from our broker that the rates were going to go up. With that being said, staff are still recommending, and our insurance broker recommends, us staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield for our health insurance and then keeping all the other benefit providers for dental, vision, and life the same with Unum. So that is our recommendation. It's within budget to keep with those same plans this year. And so we just want the blessing of council to continue on that path. Councilmember McCabe, is that a motion to approve? Okay. Councilmember McCabe has a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember McCowsky is the second on that. Let's go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
Thank you. And Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, motion carries. All right, Agenda Item P, update from the Northwest ISD Superintendent has already occurred earlier in the meeting, so we'll go on to the consent agenda. All items under this section are recommended for approval for the consent agenda. These items are of a routine nature and require only brief deliberation by council. Council reserves the right to remove any item on the consent agenda for further deliberation. We have queue the minutes of city council regular session dated September 24, 2020, our inter-local agreement with Wise County to provide emergency services by Rome Fire Rescue. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember McCabe, I see a motion there. Is there a second on that motion? Councilmember McCowsky, I see a second from you. Let's go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right, motion carries on the consent agenda. Now we've come to our executive session portion of the meeting. Let me read this first, and then we'll convene into executive session. Pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551 Texas Open Meetings Act, the council may convene into executive session to discuss the following. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. We have negotiations with City of Newark for proposed split of City of Fort Worth extraterritorial jurisdiction ETJ within Rolling B Development. And then we have Biwell Plan Development. Under Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, there's nothing. Under Section 551.074, personnel, there is nothing. Under Section 551.087, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations, there is nothing. So we will convene into executive session at 8:36 PM. If council will follow their instructions for accessing the executive session room, if everyone else will stay on the line, we'll reconvene after executive session.
Okay, I think I see nearly every council member back in regular session. So we will reconvene back into regular session at 9:21 PM. And let me just double check to make sure we've got everybody present. We've got Councilmember McCabe. We've got Councilmember Crenshaw. Are you on the line with us now?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Proton Priest is here. Councilmember McCowsky and Councilmember Easton. All right. And the city attorney is here as well. All right. So we're reconvening into executive session, discussion, and any necessary action as a result of executive session. I don't believe there is any action tonight. Is that correct? All right. And we'll go on to future agenda items. I do have to apologize to Councilmember Crenshaw. You had put on traffic restrictions on B.C. Rome in Maine at the last meeting, and I missed the note on putting that on this meeting. So we'll put that on to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then council members, if you don't have anything tonight, if you'll email the city secretary, city administrator, if you have any future agenda items, we will get those on for future meetings. With that being said, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, this is Chief Love. Could I make a comment about a fundraiser?
We're glad you're here. Yes, if you will make your comment real quick. We did hold for a minute and didn't have communication with you. Yes, if you would go ahead and do your fundraiser.
I apologize. I got with the citizens from the beginning of the meeting, and I could just now get in here a while ago. I just wanted to... The Wise County Sheriff's Office has a program called Sanidipities to help underprivileged kids during Christmas. They're doing a fundraiser selling tamales. If you want to know more about it or get involved, just email me, slove@cityroam.com.
Okay, perfect. No, thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn. I believe I saw a hand, Councilmember McCabe. Is there a second Councilmember McCowsky? All right, we'll go for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
And Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 9:24 PM. Thank you for joining us, everybody. Have a good evening.
Bye, y'all.
Bye.